Okay, I'll call a workshop order, roll call.
David Paradise.
St. Polaris.
Cole Wainwright.
Jessica Bonilla.
Michael Summercall.
Michelle Lato.
Dan Reamer.
Kirby Malina.
Wright County Annual Record.
Yeah, so just to acknowledge some of our clerical administrative staff that put these all together every year. So they shortly after the first of the year, they start compiling all the numbers and pulling everything together for all of our contract and cities. So they do a nice job on this data for us. We have a jump ahead a couple of pages here to about page three, four it looks like. The hourly rate there for 2023, you can see the progression from 2013. And then I just add a little bit of history on the bottom there when two hours are added in 2018 to bring the total up to 10 hours a day for long hours and contracted coverage in Montrose. And then on the next page, we show the 2022 activity. We responded to just over 2,200 calls for service in 2022. And just under 1,200 of those turned into some sort of a case by our deputy. That means that they gave it an actual, did some sort of a report down into a citation was issued or something along those lines. So depending on what it is, sometimes our deputy can just go in there and answer remarks to it or something like that. It doesn't require the law meeting report. Then we break down what we've deemed the quality of life incidents in Montrose. You can see we had five disorderly people. Nothing really jumps out at me as being too crazy. If you do compare 2021 to 2022, you'll see some differences down on the bottom there. So the medicals are up a little bit higher than they have been in the years past because we included everything that's medical related. So medical alarms, when you go into a medical alarm, there's all kinds of different types of medicals depending on what they are. So that's all added in there this year where we might have been missing a couple of last year. And then for the civil part of it too, 227, that also includes civil process. The sheriff's required to do by statute to be given and do in moderate Montrose here. So that's why those two numbers are a little bit higher. I always like to see that suspicious activity number upwards at. I think that's a good, a good way to measure how we're getting along with the public. When they call in, they know something isn't quite right, but they don't know if they should call or not. They call us and let us know. That's where that suspicious activity kind of falls into. So I would like to see that number upwards at the top there for calls for service. On the next page breaks down some of the traffic issues that we've had over the last year. Seven traffic hazards, 10 DUIs, parking, seasonal parking violations, traffic complaints. And then we had 658 traffic stops that were conducted within the city limits last year. And then the one below that are crime incidents. All the way from a few CSCs that were there, burglaries, and then theft seems to be across the board. The most common crime incident we get no matter where you're at in the county is some sort of a theft. You will notice too that the assaults will appear, especially in a later chart, that they look like they're up since the last few years. Assaults were one of those that they get broken down into so many different categories that this year we just put everything all into one category for assault. So whether it's a simple assault at a, at a bar or at a house party or something like that, or a domestic assault even. Those are all included in this number before, but before it was a little bit different. Then on this next chart, you can see the 2018 to 2022 comparisons. And you can see that assault number there right away. That was going by me right away, started looking at that a little bit, figuring out what was happening with that number. So that's why that's so much bigger. We don't have a bunch of people running around assaulting people in Montrose that generated those numbers. So it's just that the domestics and some of that kind of stuff was reported in a different area last year. And then we break it down by a couple of the different divisions other than patrol for the sheriff's office. So if you look on the next page, our special investigations unit, our narcotics unit. The info one might have been something that they don't necessarily need, want to do a report on. So they just quoted as an informational report, probably a need because of the investigation to call it that. A couple of drug complaints they investigated, they had two traffic stops associated just with our, kind of our recovered narcotics guys. And they executed three search ones in Montrose last year. And then the following page is our major crimes unit. So these folks have specialized training in collecting all kinds of different evidence from fingerprints to DNA. Any kind of the bigger type cases, we'll call those folks in that collect some of that evidence that we need to have. So pretty much you can see that a burglary, a death, gun incident, medicals, stolen vehicle, theft, they had been, they were down here and assisted us with one traffic stop. Then the next graph is the city comparisons. So we use Delano and Rockford as similar comparisons for Montrose here. Again, with that assault one kind of jumps out a little bit, but we've kind of talked about that already. And then it seemed to be pretty much on par with the cities that we're comparing you with. Slightly higher in the civil area, but not by a whole lot. Suspicious activities, traffic stops. You know, it's like Delano and Rockford are slightly higher, but they also contract for more hours of coverage every day. So they're naturally just going to have a little bit higher traffic stop numbers.
Third reason that Delano and Rockford are picked out as far as the city comparison go?
Trying to find something that's fairly close. If you have an idea or we could relook to the numbers again differently next year. I think the city that is a little bit closer, maybe like a Maple Lake maybe. They have, they have 48 hours of coverage a day, so you guys would be at about 10. I think it's a little bit different now that Delano increased their hours this year. So they're probably not going to be on that for when we do our annual report for 2023. So these will naturally have to change. And then Rockford has a little few more hours too. So that's something we're probably going to look at next year is change that.
Does Rockford get any patrol from that county?
They do on the Hennepin County side, but I don't know, I don't believe they do any contract either. I'm guessing on that part, but I don't think they contract any hours. I know they have an S R O in the high school. We don't provide that, but we do have one in the middle school that's on. And the last chart here is breaks down the calls by time of day. So with the way the contracting hours are, you can tell by the call, the time of day the calls are coming in that we have a deputy in town during most peak times. A lot fewer calls between two and six in the morning there. And then breaking them down by the day of the week, nothing really jumps out. Kind of surprised that Monday and Tuesday are popular days to call the sheriff's office for things. But Fridays and Saturdays seems pretty consistent there. And that is all I have unless there's any questions.
With this information, at what time do you think we might have to increase our coverage?
Well, that's a good question. I know you guys kind of have an agreement with Waverly. So right now we're using the same cars that kind of bounce back and forth and do that. As, as the population grows, and our sheriff would always say, as you have more people in here, more business comes in, you should start thinking about adding more coverage. And by looking at this, this chart back here for the times. So right now we have somebody that starts in town at 10:00 in the morning. If I was going to add any hours, it would probably be somewhere between that six and 10:00 in the morning right there is what it seems like. That would be your next logical choice as to when the calls are coming in. You see at about seven o'clock, we'd just start jumping up there for calls for service. That would probably be pretty consistent with commuter traffic, I would think. As more people are getting up, then traffic is going to increase. Do I, do I see the need to do it right now? But as the city continues to grow, it might be something that you want to think about.
Okay, thank you.
What would you say the biggest jump down in the drugs complaints here from 21 to 22 is really 121. I'd just say I don't think we've eradicated drugs in anywhere, but.
No, but I think we, I think a part of it is traffic. Our deputies, I think, are better trained and there's less drug complaints and stuff like that. That people are know that if they're getting a stop, things are going to change. Marijuana has definitely changed things with some of the things being legalized now and not legalized. That definitely cuts down on some of the numbers where some of those drug complaints where if you had some edibles that were illegally purchased or some paraphernalia or something along those lines, those would translate into these numbers. However, some of that's legalized, don't see those numbers.
What, what's the game plan with the, with the state legalizing probably coming July for us?
It's going to change the way we do business a little bit. Like right now for, we have a narcotics dog that we just added here about a year ago. That dog is not trained in marijuana or THC. So I mean, we have to do some changes internally and depends on what it looks like. It's kind of like when all this, when they started legalizing some of these edibles and that kind of stuff. There's no mechanism set up in place to test any of it, to my knowledge, there still isn't. And we run into the same problems where if something's purchased out in Colorado, you come back here, you buy something that was packaged in Minnesota. Now you got to do is switch the package you got it. There's nobody for us to test it to find out what it's at. It's definitely a challenge.
Yeah, absolutely.
I don't know really what that's going to look like, so it should be, should be kind of interesting.
Yeah, because I know some departments and I don't quote me if it's actually something going on, but they have, they can quote unquote test for impairment while driving with weed. Is that something you guys do?
Yep, absolutely. So we've worked with the county attorney very closely on that. One of the problems with THC or marijuana, just having it in your blood, just testing positive for it isn't, isn't prima facie or enough evidence to convict somebody with DUI. Or if you have methamphetamine or some painkillers or cocaine or something like that, just having a trace of it in your blood is enough to be convicted with DUI. Marijuana, we have to show improvement in impairment. So that means we have to have some sort of driving conduct, driving conduct or a crash or something along those lines. Around through field sobriety like we would do for alcohol. There's a couple of different tests that we can do for marijuana and controlled substances, but marijuana is a tough one. We just have to prove that there's impairment or some control. Alcohol's a little bit different, we can actually measure it and say something.
Not just Montrose, but countywide, what, what does the fentanyl crisis look like in Wright County?
Fentanyl is scary. You know, if you take like a 100 milligram aspirin or something like that, and you break that up into like just three little grams, that's enough fentanyl to kill somebody. And also fentanyl is very scary and we're seeing it in a bunch of different things. It's to the point where we, if we suspected it might be fentanyl or could possibly be fentanyl, we don't even have our deputies tested. They package it up, try and get a weight down, and then we send it off to the lab and test it. So we don't even mess with that. All of our deputies are carrying Narcan now. They've been doing that probably for a couple of years now. So every week it seems like the Narcan in somebody. It's not always for fentanyl, but a lot of times it is fentanyl. Or they took something that had fentanyl in it. But not uncommon for our deputies when they're, when they find something else in a traffic stop, there are some sort of fentanyl pills that are associated with that kind of stop. So we're seeing plenty of it. And it's, it's something scary, we all need to be aware of that.
Do all the deputies wear like body cams and?
We don't have body cameras, but we do have squad car, squad car cameras. They do carry a mic on there so that all the conversations and stuff are being recorded. We are going to a new records management system and part of that deal is going to be body cameras. So they're coming, they just, we don't have them yet. There's a lot of data retention and, and then there's a records request for that. And it was going to be redacting and looking early, as well cam early. So we're in the process of working that out right now.
Anything else?
Can you get out of your hair? You guys can tap the wheels.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Stay safe. Thanks. Good afternoon.
Stay safe.
Capital Improvement Plan discussion.
Evening Mayor and Council. What I've included in the packet is kind of culmination of what remains from the last five-year capital improvement plan. Some things are still scheduled to happen this year and Dan has them underway. But many things either that didn't get done in that five-year span have more to do with replacing vehicles, which Public Works is going to be putting together. Kind of a list for me of what, what vehicles really are going to be timing out soonest. And we'll get more of a long-term, you know, retention schedule for those vehicles going forward, when they need to be replaced. So that's something that Dan and I can work on. That same thing goes for the fire department. Some of these things that are fire department related on this list may have actually been done. I haven't spoken to Kevin specifically about the past five years on here yet. But he's also going to give me a list of, they have a different schedule for their vehicles, their longer-term assets. And I think they're, he's proposing changing some of those, so some of those spans. I think they were at 20 or 25 years and they're looking at extending the life because, you know, one of their trucks is up for replacement and it's perfectly good. And really all of what happened is we get a brand-new truck at severe cost and move a, not a perfectly good truck into the barely getting used role. So both Dan for his vehicles and equipment and Kevin for his vehicles and equipment, we're going to be putting together more long-term. This is the kind of rotation that those should go through and then we'll start identifying the things that are on their last legs and should be gotten rid of more, more quickly. But the other things on here would be, you'll see a bunch of them are phases of the trail plan. So another thing we're going to be getting a new parking trail plan as parking rec gets through that information. And then as far as capital improvement plan, we may change which ones are working on. But it looked like those last five years, what was looked at was completing a phase every year. And it kind of being an estimated $5,000, that may have gone up probably with materials. But I think we're already putting quite a bit more this year than we had been previous years into parks improvement, other than structures or buildings. So that would likely be there, or we could look at just beating that up if that's not enough, but those phases. I guess besides vehicles and parking trail plan, the other things on here would be like the regional park shelter, which this was, it was scheduled to start working. That's when they started working on plans was 2019, I believe, actually getting, putting in for funding. That's now kind of a hiatus. So I guess the remaining things on this list, what I'd be wondering is what for sure are we, apart again, apart from vehicles and trails. What for sure are we keeping on here? Is it more emergent because now it's not happened on the timeline that it was supposed to? Or what things maybe are just getting reimagined? And that also leads into the 2023 to 2030 span where there's just a handful of items. Again, these are mostly longer-term replacement to do with fire department and vehicles. One of them is the regionalization of wastewater, which now we're, we're making progress on that. What we're going to do there, as long as things keep on moving forward. But one of the items on there was also a swimming pool splash pad. I don't know how much of this was wish list or drinkings, but those are still on there. And now as we're approaching where that's going to be in our five-year plan, I don't know if those get pushed to the back burner and stay in the dreams or if some of these things are going to be implemented in our next five years.
In my opinion, I would like to get rid of option A and B for replacing the water tower and just go with the largest one. That's what I would like to do because it's going to save us in the long run instead of just going to 100,000. If we go to 250,000, it's going to save us later on of having to expand again.
That's what I would like to see. Well, especially since we're now three years past the proposed date when that was going to happen.
Yeah, definitely get rid of the option A. I don't want to go with the rehab and end up spending the same amount, if not more money to make sure it's actually up to date and working.
And get rid of all the lead name on it.
Well, it's going to cost you money to get rid of that old one, trust me.
Yeah, well, that's, that's part of the plan.
This is more going to be on the timeline or the plan too, after the talk with regionalizing with Waverly. And something was settled on there, we'll probably talk about our tower specifically in location. Because that all has to be.
I think it's part of the, we've been so.
Yeah, so it's kind of part of the facility plan. It's going to be like our extension part, whether we go with Waverly or not. And all the minks got to come in here and do pressure studies and figure out which side of the column they needed on and all that stuff, so.
But that one is going to have to go.
Yeah, it's going to have to go.
When you replace it, I'd like the bigger option versus.
Right, and also we did look at some of these, Sean, me and Sean did look at rehab and that, and it was absolutely outrageous. And for 50,000 gallons, it's not worth it. Plus, I know with the fire department wanting to add on eventually in the future, it's in the way. Right, so. But I'm just saying, this is going to be more on the water plan that we're already working on. Even if we go with Waverly, this is going to be part of Montrose's individual plan, right? So.
Well, once everybody's thoughts on swimming pool splash pad, I feel like every city around us is adding that in the next year or two.
Michael, what are you looking to do here? You want to go line item and, and stay on, and just go through these and see what these guys would like to leave on here and what they want to X-nay? Or what, what are you looking?
Again, apart from the vehicles, because that's going to be a discussion probably just between staff, anything other than, I think parking trail is going to come from parking rec. I think vehicles are going to come from Danny and vehicles and equipment is going to come from Danny and Kevin. So then, yeah, other, other things on there, I mean, the perfect example is that water tower. Is that emergency now that we're three years overdue? Or, you know, you're saying it's going to be on this next plan, so we're probably going to hold off.
Are we only looking to 2030 or are we looking farther?
We, we can look as far as you want. I think what we're going to be very specific on is the next five years. These, that's why I thought that the other years that were on that previous plan look more like things just that don't get replaced within five years that were out farther. Like the, the skid, or the wheel loader and then wish list things like a swimming pool splash pad. But not to, I'm not saying don't do swimming pool splash pad, I just that, that far out seem more like a, just a fly or we're just going to, yeah, that's. That'd be, that'd be good someday, but we don't actually want to plan for that. Yeah, of the things that we've already passed, I think those would be the priority to see are those, what's the priority now? Are they still moderate or high or low? Or are they just going to drop off the things with the no plan? And then it's what, what's the new wish list? What are the new things that we're, we want to do in the next five years? I think wastewater and water seem like a pretty big list, just those two. But it's what else? Those are mostly going to be funded through rates. So if there's other city projects that we're going to undertake, it's still going to come from the same type place. So whatever, we're going to focus on raising rates and back up on taxes or, but we have plenty of taxes to do some of these things.
Relocation and of the outside warning siren, it's actually on here twice, but it was more high in 2017.
That, so again, the ones that are, it would be Kevin, fire department or emergency management. I haven't sat down with him on the previous stuff yet. He's putting together that vehicle schedule for me, so I was going to talk to him about that. So those, those aren't necessarily undone, I just haven't asked him if that happened. I know last year talking to him about the sirens, whatever state we're in, we're not behind. He's on top of whatever we need currently.
And then just replace the one out by regional park.
Yeah, something got worked on last year, fixed or replaced.
No, it just got fixed. So that one I think went in in 2017.
Okay.
He's just talked about adding another one that west of where you guys live, so. Yeah, this is more emergency management talk with Kevin, but all our sirens were GPSed and brought to both the minks. So they could do an overlay on coverages on those. But I, once again, I, I, this is a Kevin thing. Some of this stuff was when me and Michael were going through it, like.
Something's up came up. Yeah, something with the siren, because I know, I can barely hear it at my house.
Remember.
You have a noise.
Well, here's the deal, you're not supposed to hear it in the house, you're supposed to hear it if you're outside.
Hey, trust me, there's a storm coming, I'm standing outside.
Right.
You could have removed that stand.
Yep, exactly, so.
You sit there and watch it till someone hits you in the face.
No, right.
So that's, that's a Kevin thing and there's probably no doubt, you probably got to leave something on this for that. Because they're not cheap. But like Michael, like you want to go through boom, boom, what's not like all the way through this thing? So where are we at here? I mean, if we're not talking about vehicles.
Then we're down to backup generator.
That was, that was already done.
That's already done.
Well, we, 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 where are we at? Lift station is not done either. I'm shocked that these are on here. I mean, I'm glad they're on here, I never saw this, so prior. I would say that needs to stay on there. I don't know how far you guys want to push it out, but the sooner we get one at that first relift, the better in my eyes, but.
That's something we can maybe work into the water treatment plan?
No.
No.
That's, this is wastewater, no. There would have to be wastewater plan, but yeah.
Regionalization of wastewater then?
For a generator?
Yeah.
You could use ARPA money.
You could. But once you put a generator there, how they suggest you fence around it too.
Yep.
Otherwise they'll steal all the copper out of it.
Same thing, Kevin, yeah.
So you want to keep both of those at medium then?
Yeah, I would leave them at medium and put them in on the next five-year plan. That's my suggestion, I don't know what you guys' thoughts are. I don't know what year you specify to, put one one year and one the next year.
What, Michael, what do you consider high, one to three or one to five?
I would think, well, so again, if it's high within that year, I would think that's something that has to happen in that year. So if we're talking, if anything's high, if we're talking all five years and high, I think that's something we want to undertake either this year with what we budgeted or budget for next year.
So medium for the generators.
Medium of what year? Like what do you want to leave at medium and this year?
So we don't, I mean, we know how much ARPA funding there is, we don't know how much we've already spent in our heads with some of the security improvements Kevin's been.
2025?
Getting estimates, but the ARPA funds themselves need to be spent by the 2024. So if we want to include one or both generators, then we probably want to put that as this year and next year.
Right, so.
Or if it's off there, why even wait and wait for the last few ones?
Right, so I think, this is my personal, I think the lift station one needs to be put in for City Hall one. So I would like to see that one this year then.
So that one this year, City Hall 24?
2023, City Hall 2024. It's more important to keep the wastewater flowing than to have computers running at City Hall.
I want their internet more than they want.
They might want to pay their bill online instead of having their toilet flush.
Maybe.
So we're going to one at 2023, one at 2024 and put them, leave them at medium?
It'd probably be high then if it's feed.
I mean, the priority would be high if, the highest thing is the spending money on ARPA, isn't that sort of?
Okay, well then we'll put them to high then, huh? Everybody agree with that? Warning siren, that's him. Walking trail, that's park plan.
You're down to the bathroom facility at Veterans?
Yes, still parking trail plan. The truck thing, and we can move on to the next page.
Overlay parking?
Overlay the parking area of the public workshop at the wastewater plant. So I don't think we need to overlay it, I think a shed needs to be built over the top of it. So I would like to switch that, maybe outweighs, put it on medium to low to, to additional, add additional square footage to existing shed. I don't know what you guys' thoughts are on that. I asked the guys, this is their top five.
Yeah, I have Coco on this topic.
I need more storage.
Yeah, I mean, I was out there and saw, I mean.
I mean, why would you put down a new parking lot if you're going to add a shed on it? Right, so at 50,000 ain't going to touch it.
Well, matter of fact, anywhere where the, if we go with regional, or sending our stuff, do we?
No, no. I don't think so, it would probably be nice to know where that new lift station would go if they were to put it in, but that's why I put it on here. I like leave it on a medium and put them, put it on at like 2025 maybe or 20, 20, 26?
For the shed?
Yeah.
Oh, Coco wants that like yesterday.
Now.
So I was out there and looking at all the bigger equipment that's just hanging out outside. How much is that getting hurt by sitting out there in the winter?
I would love to see all our equipment stored inside, but.
Plus the salt or something I think was.
Oh, I'm going to, yeah, I want to add.
Somewhere with salt.
I mean, how much you think of that is, we're losing, we're losing timeframe on those, on that equipment because it is getting.
Well, if we get new plow trucks, yeah, I mean, I want everything stored inside and heated, let's be honest. That shed needs to be doubled, if not tripled. Just how much money you guys wanna spend it? I'll assume you wanted to get it done.
How big is that shed right now?
Sixty by a hundred, maybe, eighty? It needs to double. We gotta move equipment to get equipment out, and I think that's ridiculous.
Like the new shed that they built.
I don't think you could ever give Public Works enough storage, I mean, let's be honest. That is just, but down there, yeah. So I would like to kick that over to adding square footage onto existing shed at wastewater facility? And your guys' thoughts on the money and the priority in the year?
I hate to see another winter come through, but I don't think we have the money this year to put that together. I think it's something we need to at least think for, for twenty-four.
So you wanna put it in there in twenty twenty-four? Your guys' thoughts?
I think if you wait longer, it might be better.
It might take us a year to get the bids on it. Cause all the meats enough to design it, guys, so.
And you said we gotta know what is gonna be the plan with the wastewater.
Right, they might need to go on that side of the road with the other lift, I don't know, I can't tell you that. But I'd like to see it on the plan, and I think that probably needs to be quadrupled, if not ten times that.
That, the money?
Yeah. I mean, fifty thousand for a shed where you're doing cement work is not gonna touch it. So we're talking like.
How much was it just for the small shed we were gonna build for the regional, the regional park? I mean, that would.
Yeah. This would need to go to like a million or half a million to a million dollars. I know it's rough to hear that, but.
It was just about planning how much we're gonna put capital improvements in. And where else would we draw down?
That's a good question. I say just with the price of what it potentially could be, we should look more at twenty twenty-five when we're done with the other project, hopefully. Cause the time line for the wastewater is the end of twenty twenty-five, right?
You're right. Well, we go to twenty, I just want it on here for sure. I want it on the CFP plan. And you could leave it even at medium, I mean, we can get by with what we got. We're getting new trucks coming in, but we're gonna have to get rid of some of those older trucks anyway. I mean, the main thing is to keep the plow trucks in the heated shed. Well, we outgrew it, we outgrew that thing ten years ago. So. Money-wise, I have no idea what it's gonna cost, I know it's gonna be expensive. I think you're required to have six inches of concrete and all those good requirements of a facility like that, so.
Would you just tear, would you just add on or would you tear down and build?
Well, we'd add on to that one that's there. It would probably double that size of that shed. And if that pond's gone, you never know, that pond might not be in use, we can backfill it and put wherever we want. But we need the money in there to add storage, whether it's adding on to there or we come up with a. So I guess the big question is gear, priority and money? Or your guys' thoughts?
Well, I think for all these estimates, did we get an estimate from both McBurnt?
Emdo?
Or, yeah, Emdo.
Yeah, we did receive a proposal for them to help us with a long-term plan. And I think some of that will come with them and kind of how we can get our finances to work for us, so.
Let's get it on there, I mean.
Right.
It's twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, I think some of the detailed stuff will come with them, with their.
Well, my question is, how much can we go with this, Michael? I mean, like, how high can you go?
You would wanna know how much you need, and then we would go from there to find out how much that would cost, and then.
And they would be able to help us with some of the.
And then we would go with. How badly do you want it?
Put a question mark in the money area?
Yeah, I don't think we're touching the money estimate, we're not.
Right.
Calling around to our buddies who build public works sheds and seeing. It's more like a brainstorming wishlist.
Right, right.
We'll have the next phase of timing and how much we're putting away.
Makes sense. Um, the next two items.
These are ones you said that you'd like to have underway this year and we could do it within the budget we currently have.
Yeah, and they need to be moved to high.
High twenty twenty-three?
Yeah. And hopefully fifteen thousand will cover it.
Well, I wouldn't get bogged down in the, the numbers in here are more to inform what our budgeting is for the year we're talking about. But right now, we're talking about, these need to get done this year, you have a budget and those developments.
So we're required to have these wells pulled every five years and inspected by a certified well company. And part of our well protection plan, that you've got to see the very end of, the boring part. Is to have these pulled and do testing with these guys, but this is, this money is allocated in there for if the, if the actually well needs, the mortar needs to be replaced and the stand pipe of the well needs to be replaced. I think he was looking out for the future here. I knew nothing about this twenty twenty-three, I mean, it should have been done. Last year or the year before. But they need to stay on there, and we'll get this done this year. Wells four and five need to be, and I think they're gonna wanna do that anyway with that water plant. They're gonna wanna look at those wells, so. The next part, I think, is like you said on your parking trail plan, you have to wait till that's done. I'm not fully sure how they're gonna get a walking trail.
From Dorson, right?
Yeah, without you buying land from West Dorset, good luck.
Again, I wasn't here when the, you were here, a couple people here were here. I think a lot, a lot of these plan phases have more to do with expected development.
Or do, we wanna leave it on there, I mean, obviously when the parking trail plan comes back at you, I.
It's always a future plan for when it does become available.
Again, I think these were more, we were getting multiple developments started every year. Houses were rolling in and now it's slowing down more, things are already getting built out, and now it's just waiting for some of those properties to pop open. So I think this was more, not, it was just, but like, if things don't lie.
Yeah. So this is like a question mark until the parking trail plan, like you've got on there? Uh, construction new concession stand at Carver Field.
I don't think fifty thousand's gonna touch.
Oh, no, and I would say that probably, I don't know what the plans are on that. I'd say the field needs the work first, but.
I think what I hear from people is they'd like the trails done, first and foremost, from talking with people around town.
The trails are all connected, don't they, private properties?
No, 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 I know, I'm just saying, but even the ones we do have, just even resurfacing them and stuff like that, making them look nice. You know, I know of the, the Clementa project, you know, people ask me, like, can we put a sidewalk there? I'm like, I don't know. Like doubtful, but, you know, those are wishes from people that I know.
Very expensive.
Hundred percent, you know, but people, this is, this is a nice town to go walk around in, and I think people wanna make sure that what we do have is taken care of.
You have a few areas where trails can be connected and they're not done. North Ridge Park, or the one with the hockey rink. I mean, that's supposed to have a trail going through it, connecting.
What part of that land is private, I don't know, too?
Why? We have easements through there?
Uh, isn't that owned by the company that's there? It's escaping the name, but it's.
Which one?
Fitzsimmons.
Fitzsimmons Railroad, yeah.
Yeah, but I'm talking within the park, connecting it to Seventh Street, Emerson and that cul-de-sac. I mean, there's.
There's like an easement there of somebody.
Yeah, well, you got a park bench sitting there with no walking trail, that's just weird, I don't get it.
Yeah, I think Parker Rec is working on prioritizing.
Right, so you just, like, I don't.
I think that that's. I think it needs to stay on there, but it can be a farther out project, it needs to get done. I wish they would have just renovated it back when it used to be the old concession stand.
I asked that question, Kirby, as I'm swinging the payloader into the brick.
Yeah, I.
I'm like, why didn't you just put money into it? It needed work, but it's nicer to know what you got.
And it had bathrooms, it had the announcer's booth up there, and it had everything that you needed.
And I think parking, parking rec to come up with more of a plan for Carver Field in general.
Right.
That should be a part of, you know, a phase into it.
We're looking at the, um, did I do a copy of that grant?
No, I do not, I did not print it out, and now you can't access it.
Yeah, we can't access it now.
So, but I remember the grant, the grant requires you to get bids and will only go for infield work or fencing, nothing else. Can't do lights with it, you can't dugouts with it, can't do building with it.
When did they take the dugouts out there?
I'm pretty sure you couldn't do any building.
I know people who have done dugouts with the twin grant.
I just know lights, no lights, no concessions.
Yeah, right.
Fencing and.
Fencing and infield work, you need to have a matching, city's got a.
Yeah, you have to match whatever it is, a lot of times they only give you.
It's like ten thousand. Yeah, it's like ten thousand bucks, I think it was max on it.
Free, free money, it's free money.
That field needs field work and new fence, yeah. I mean, that's where you'd stick it, and you gotta have the application in, in the fall, I think.
It starts in January.
And they want before and after pictures, so when we started looking at it, there was two feet of snow on the field.
So we'll get. We'll get pictures this summer.
Yeah, and then let the parking rec decide what they wanna tackle first. I suggest you work on the infield first.
And the outfield, these be all filled in with dirt.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and then new fencing.
I really don't do anything with the infield with that coming in the night.
I mean, we got some lime here, but it is pretty soft right now.
Yeah.
Well, we could look the best we can with what we got. That's all I can do, but I would leave it on there, I'd push it way out, leave it on low, and probably jump that money up, that's just my thought.
Yeah, I mean, just in general, you're probably looking at more hundred fifty to two hundred.
Look where your shelter was gonna cost you out in that park.
Wouldn't be that extravagant of a shelter, but if you're gonna serve food, you're gonna.
What are you thinking out there?
For concession stand?
What, you mean years?
No, just, I mean, what's the vision for concession stand?
It would be all one, like a concession stand.
Bathroom.
Bathrooms, it is stubbed in with new water and sewer over there.
That'd be the one that I'd say that if you, you can wait on the bathrooms, but leave it to extend if you put up a new concession stand.
I think they'll require you to put bathrooms in if you build it.
If you get a grant for it.
Right, just like they were gonna require you to put bathrooms in the one on the regional, right?
Well, that's with the grant.
Right.
Right.
I don't know, it's whatever Park Rec comes up with and suggest to you guys.
Have they talked about, I don't know that they were going over a park or two.
I envisioned the old one, that's fine.
I know what the law.
I think they have, they've briefly touched on it, but with them going through kind of prior, prioritizing stuff now. They've talked about Carver a few times, it's just the concession stand was never.
I didn't even know it was on here, to tell you the truth, I mean, until Michael.
It was more kind of sprucing it up a bit, but not necessarily building changes or anything.
Well, if we're to have a lot of, like, you know, a grant, talking more about the field, then maybe that is the sooner focus maybe at, once the parking trail plan is, well, maybe not done, because we wanna. Grab a field in there, but they can, it doesn't sound like it's on the top of their priority list, but maybe bring it to their attention, that this was a goal in council's past.
We can spruce it up in there with the donation that I received, you know, if we go up for that again, but. All you really need to do is spruce it up is stainless steel and flooring and. And you can get water, yeah, into it.
Well, whatever legal, I mean, the only thing you got there is a spigot, the well, the yard hydrant.
Water tastes fine to me.
Oh, it's city water and that hydrant.
So what you guys? I would say if you're looking at a concession stand.
You can run a food grade holes in there.
We should, we should look at more ten years from now for the concession stand, we're looking at all the other stuff, they're gonna put a date on it right now.
So twenty thirty, this only goes with twenty thirty.
There you go, whatever.
Twenty thirty, low. Two hundred thousand, that's still not gonna touch it.
We'll still look at, you know, the pictures this summer for the grant for January, with anything.
Well, yeah, but this is for the stand, like, you guys wanna leave it on there or not, like?
Yes. Not, man.
Yeah, cause we're not gonna have anything anywhere else.
Trunk Highway twelve left turn lane is a rapid whole lane extension.
These are the ones that keep on getting kicked back, awaiting.
Yeah, the state, yeah, okay, but see, the state's gonna come and ask you guys for some money too, because some of this is gonna be our streets, just to let you know. So that's why it's on here. So we'll just leave that go, I mean, this is supposed to be done in twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, we keep getting pushed out, so we'll see.
Well, last I heard, it was twenty twenty-four.
I think you're right, so.
So let's just switch it to twenty twenty-four and leave it where it's at?
Until they switch it again?
Yeah. Streetscape, I have no idea what that's, yeah, that's Min Duh thing.
I think that's the same project.
This one's interesting, Zephyr Avenue Railroad Crossing Study.
Where is there a railroad crossing on Zephyr?
There isn't.
I think this is.
So what this was about was eventually, maybe they were thinking if developer was gonna buy more land to the east of Pheasant Hills. And then have a crossing going through Zephyr, around ABC and cross into it.
That's gonna be interesting.
That's not gonna happen. I think you could X-nay this off the sheet altogether.
Who knows, it says development driven, so I don't know if this was a, get an estimate, if you were a developer.
Yeah, and I don't even know where, how you could even do that, but.
I think we could X-nay that thing completely.
Agreed.
Lighted message board. Now, I think that needs to be on there.
Is this something we can put through with the ARPA money?
Yes, because we can use it for emergency purposes.
And was this, was this just for one sign, and then we talked about potentially two? Was this the cost for two, then?
I don't think we know what.
That's what I'm saying.
This might be enough for one or half of one.
I would say let's put this on a high priority.
Where is it gonna go?
We talked about a smaller one out here. On the front of the building. And then a large one out on Highway twelve, kinda like what the city Waverly has.
And then we ain't gotta hang no more postings? That'd be great. I mean, legally, if you advertise them on the signs, you ain't gotta post it anywhere, right?
I think we're gonna put a bulletin board on the backside of the electronic sign.
Well, I thought we were buying bulletin board for all the work trucks.
We'll laminate it, so we can let out advertising.
Just curiosity, where would we put it on Highway twelve, where you got land?
I'll buy a, go welcome to Montrose sign us.
Already? Right by Zephyr?
We're still thinking ARPA with this, if we haven't spent it all in our heads yet?
I would say. Goes into that.
Or we need some budget for it.
Or, yeah.
I mean, currently, we've only spent just on the generator out of it, so we get about three hundred.
Three hundred right now.
Like three forty something like that, but the, we still don't know what the full estimates are for the scope of what Kevin's put together for.
Yeah, he was thinking probably around the eighty thousand mark.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna be hundreds.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You can only say ARPA, so many times, I prefer ARPA, but.
No, hundred percent, but I think that's something.
Yeah, till it's at zero.
Well, I think this is something that I would.
Well, you wanna get to zero, correct?
That's right.
You don't wanna, you wanna give that money back to the county.
I mean, the benefit goes back to the federal government, if the county doesn't get this batch of it.
They don't get this one.
The benefit of putting, I mean, they're smaller, smaller little projects in it is that it's gonna make an impact on those things versus if we kept it and just put it toward. You know, the next water project, I mean, it would be dropped, but wouldn't even cover interest for one year.
Exactly.
So, but these little projects, take them right off the list.
It's got milling overlay on first.
That's already getting done.
Did you guys mention Garfield?
Sure did.
What's going on over there?
What's going on?
Milling overlay.
Garfield Hill?
Uh, it'll be going out for bid this summer.
Okay, development in there, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, hill, uh.
That was approved at the council meeting.
Hill, Garner, Holden.
Holden, yep.
And Garfield.
They put speed bumps in all of it.
They're gonna be. When that gets redone. So that got, it's gonna go out for bid. Hopefully, the same crew that's doing the work over there will bid it and do it all at the same time, but.
You never know.
Don't know what's gonna happen there.
Is that drainage gonna be fixed on Garfield?
Never knew there was a drainage issue on Garfield.
The thing that's collapsing. I thought maybe it was you that outlined it.
What are we talking about? Storm sewer? Yeah, those will all have to be fixed before anything gets milled and overlaid. That, that'll be part of the project. They all get looked at. Hopefully, that gets done this year. We'll see.
Something's gotta go there.
Right, or we'll just patch it until it does get done.
Okay.
Dog park.
That's called regional soccer field?
I would also say.
We definitely could etch ney that.
Insurance cost on that?
That's ridiculous.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Like, there's.
We spent a lot of time on that.
I, I don't, I don't foresee that being something the city wants.
So.
So they ax on that?
I would.
Something the city wants. It's already been used.
I know. We don't want it to be used like that.
Till they pay the bill for it, then they'll.
All right, well, I think that's the rest of that page, right? I mean, fire department, fire station.
Fire is a.
I mean, the fire, the fire station, I don't think Kevin wants a new station.
He wants to.
Add on.
He wants to add on, I think.
Take over the rest of it, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's the other piece of it is like, the idea of taking over the community center as well, like. Do we need to plan in another community center plan then? Because I think.
That's on here.
We can't, yeah, no, no, and I'm just trying to make sure, like, that's, that's where Kevin's thinking. It's probably a lot more cost effective for the city. To go that route than to build a brand new station.
I would just be more concerned and curious if they would want like a, a garage that would hold a couple of them and have a couple offices on that side of the tracks. Just in case, because every couple of years, we get it where there's a train that's literally stopped on the tracks, and then you have to call for somebody to go all the way around.
We have, we have mutual aid for that. I mean, and again, if, if the emergency is on the other side of the tracks, they're waiting anyways. You know, like, we're, luckily, it's not, it doesn't happen too often, thankfully, but, yeah, I mean, if there's an issue like that. We, we have mutual aid in effect for that exact reason.
Well, it does say new slash remodel on here.
Yeah, I think the initial thing was maybe going on Third Street with it, but I know that Kevin doesn't want a second station right now.
Well, if we get that tower down, you guys can go all the way through the front.
Well, he wants to extend that out, but then what he wants, what we want, what he wants to do with the community centers, if he takes that on, is turn that into a training area. As well as maybe some bunks and some more offices.
With the storage.
Yeah, well, the equipment storage will be the, what, what goes out towards the, uh, the actual water tower.
So you wanna leave this on here?
Yes.
And switch it to.
Switch it to remodel.
Or just get rid of new on there, because the second person's remodel, but like, what year and you wanna leave it on high?
That's gonna be more subject to.
That's gonna be more Kevin question. And, and also what we determine on if he wants to purchase the community center, what the plan is for the community center. Cause I'd like, I personally like that built up before we take that over.
Oh, yeah.
You know.
You're definitely gonna need a community center placed before you get rid of the old one.
And so I think that needs to be prioritized before the department's prioritized.
I agree. So we're done with that page. I think that is coming up here, down the line here. Again, that's heavy equipment, that's Kevin, Country View Estates, First Street North Improvements.
Reconstruct Old Winnie Lane, Cherry Lane, Charity Lane.
That needs to stay on there. So that's gonna be your neck of the woods.
Last section of town.
The last section of the town with no curb and gutter.
Except for.
Except for Garfield.
Yeah.
That, that will be the, right now, that's the oldest part of town, as far as our stuff under the road. Which is nice, it's a pretty small area for a town this size to have that new stuff under the road. It's beautiful. It should last the rest of my career. But that needs to be replaced over there.
It's on here for twenty twenty five.
I don't know if you guys, with the water and wastewater thing coming down the line, I don't think. Twenty twenty five is gonna be feasible. I think you're gonna have to kick this out a little further.
Agreed. I do think.
That's my opinion.
To do some, to charity there, because it's pretty bad by Jackie B's. Something's gonna have to get done to kind of fix that for a while. And going around the corner on charity, it's pretty rough over there too. I mean, I'm sure you guys hit it with the, the snow plows every time, those just massive.
And that, and that is why I beefed up regular street, yeah, fund. I mean, I mean, would that be worth adding a line item in here to do like, it's our fund, I'll be honest with you. That, that's kind of a repair that we can't do in-house. We're gonna have to hire a contractor in to cut that section of the road out in a tarp.
Yeah, you can always do some piecemeal projects just to.
Well, we'd have like thirty projects that come in and do little projects through the town. They're not gonna come in and just do that little corner and leave. They're gonna want to be able to do like a week's worth of work. We don't have the equipment here or the manpower to do road projects like that. But we need to have the money, because let's be honest, it's gonna cost you more when you hire a company to do it. I don't know if you wanna add it as a line item in here. I know we beefed that street pro, uh, fund up.
Yeah, you have a street improvement fund and you have a materials fund.
Right.
This is more work for what you guys are doing and the street improvement.
But you'd be shocked how fast we're gonna go through that.
As far as this goes though, I mean.
I would kick it out.
Push it out to probably twenty thirty with everything else that we've got to pay for, unfortunately.
Well, my, my take for, this would be kind of a smaller version of the whole downtown improvement project as far as.
Right, right.
So I'd say maybe once the timing of the bonds that aren't the downtown improvement bond fall off, so we're just doing the one. Then phase this in to start up then.
Yeah.
So then we'll.
What, when does that fall off?
Time out. There's a handful that are falling off in the next few years, like twenty twenty seven.
Yeah, I thought they said it would free up a bunch of space in twenty twenty eight.
So, but we could, I mean, we could, I mean, I think that number in later and just put in after bonds, say.
I think that at that point, we're gonna be, we're gonna have added more for the wastewater and the water, so I, it sucks.
This could be an ABDO question, but trying to figure out when we can afford it.
But also, and, but also those other, what we're talking about with water and wastewater are gonna be coming solely out of rates. And maybe a different type of loan might not be a general obligation, but it might be some kind of public loan.
I mean.
But then.
That area lasts a long.
And you know, this area you're talking about, even if we put it off that far, it's probably still gonna need some.
Well, it's gonna need one and stick some money into the road.
Is that on the street improvement plan? Is that?
And that plan would go to make? It is, but it's only in there to be seal coated. Which is wrong. It needs to be milled and overlaid, but you're, you're sticking money into Band-Aids. That, that's the problem.
But what we're saying is, we can't afford to replace it, or the timing when we're gonna replace it, so you need a Band-Aid.
Yeah, you gotta have.
Which Band-Aid do you want? Is it gonna be?
I want the good one.
Sooner or milling overlay.
Well, it's already been seal coated, so you see what that looks like. So the next one's a milling overlay on it.
But then it would either come in, it would get reprioritized in that street plan.
Right, right.
Right at the end of it afterward, and then that's what we save in our street improvement funds for.
I just wouldn't wanna put so much into that area and then we just rip it up five years later completely to redo it with curb cutter and everything else. So there's that.
There's so much line there.
Be like, where do you, what do you wanna do there? I mean, can, can you patch it to sustain for ten years? I, well, five. Say we get to twenty twenty nine.
Something you can do to make it prolong.
Yes.
Well, no. I say you leave this on here. I wanna say it's gonna cost you more than what's on there.
All these prices are from five, six years ago, everything's.
And I would kick it out. You can go as far as you want. I mean, we can do whatever you like. But it needs to stay on there. That's all I'm saying. So whatever you guys come up with, whatever you guys' thoughts are on it.
Shoot for five years?
And then three years when we're talking about, and then kick it out again. Never know. Yeah, so what are we talking, twenty twenty eight? I would put it on as a medium, and I would increase that number, but you're gonna talk to ABDO and they'll give you more of a. The next line item, it all depends upon what we do with the wastewater facility. I'm glad that this was on here. I mean, whoever put this on there was thinking. So, um, I think we could take this off. Cause no matter what, you're not gonna, it's either you build a new plant out there or you're gonna regionalize, so. This could come off here. Now, if you don't do anything and you guys are gonna build a new plant, or you're not gonna allow any development in, then this needs to happen.
Well, this'll just get replaced with that regionalization.
Right.
And we already have a, that's a total timetable.
So what my que, well, what I'm saying is that money needs to stay on here if you don't plan on doing anything at all. I mean, we have to rebuild that system, probably next year or the year after. It's that old. So maybe we leave it on there, push it out to twenty twenty, and put it on low, just until we wait to see what happens with this regionalization?
Makes sense to me.
All right, put it on low. Then have to decide to knock that plant down, or you can next day it all together. So we pull splash pad, I could.
Take it off.
Yeah.
You don't wanna keep a splash, a splash pad on there for ten years from now?
Too much maintenance.
Also, splash pads in ten years will be obsolete. And that, that will be the next thing.
Yeah, I.
We're, we're surrounded by splash pads, so we do that, we're not.
And I don't think we need to take on the extra insurance, the extra costs, the extra everything. Main is the, the on.
Not Delano, does it?
Delano.
They charge for splash.
Yeah, but, okay, let's, let's look at Delano's area, okay? They invested a lot of money into that whole system and, and that whole park, I mean.
Pretty much donated it.
But I'm, I'm just saying, like, it's, it, they, they put that money there and, and.
It makes them spend a ton of time working on it and. Yeah, that always breaks down.
We don't, we don't have that space.
They do have like the.
No, you don't.
With a pool, generally, I don't know if it would generate enough revenue to keep teenagers working there, probably not.
No.
And the insurance and the chlorine and the whole way, yeah.
Yeah, it's a lot of work, yeah. That'll go in the new, in the reparations.
That's kind of what I was looking for, is like, basketball courts in this recreation center, you know?
My next is Breckenridge.
Breckenridge Lane to Emerson Amnestree Construction. So what that is, is connecting the two developments.
Yeah, that'll just depend on when, if that development gets built up out there.
What, what happened there was, I'm sorry, and I'll say it aloud, the city should have made the person who put in that development connected. Back then. The next developer is not gonna wanna do it.
Yeah.
So the city's gonna end up doing this.
Yeah.
And you're gonna need to leave it on here, no matter what. Even if the development goes between those two, they're not gonna wanna do it. They're gonna resist the whole time. And the city's gonna need to do this, and the sooner you do it, the better. It'd be a lot easier for us plowing. You could leave it on here and kick it way out, leave it on low. That's my suggestion.
I mean, especially if the, the rest of the stuff goes with Creekside Hollow. Probably be nice to have another emergency entrance that direction.
If, yeah, Creekside Hollow goes through, then you probably don't need it. That, that's our second way to get in there. If it doesn't, then, I don't know. But I would leave it on here. I'm glad whoever thought about this put it on here, but what I'm trying to tell you is, when you get developers coming in, make them connect. That way, you never have to have these on here. I, I couldn't believe they didn't make them connect that back in the day. So.
Everybody used to have fun driving down that gravel road, you know?
Yeah, it was real fun trying to plow it too.
I bet.
We got stuck in there so many times, that's why we shut it down. It was ridiculous. So leave it on here, kick it way out.
I would say that five year window.
Yeah.
Twenty nine thirty?
Yeah.
And just to say it a second time, swimming pool and splash pad, you can cross that off.
Sound there twice.
It's so, it's such a bad idea, it's out there twice.
So they were gonna build it twice, so.
Well, that was the second one they were gonna put up too.
One splash pad, one pool.
That's probably what it was about. Five hundred thousand for one, five hundred thousand for the other. Not close enough.
No, no.
Community and Rec Center.
That's kind of cool.
That's crazy.
This is one we need to discuss. I mean, I think it's, it's something that's so really lacking in our town.
Well, like, um, St. Michael, that built the one where it's City Hall, and they have like a little rec center there as well.
And a drive-through.
Yeah.
I survived you.
They had a car that drove into it.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
I thought that was Monticello.
That was Monticello. What, did you say St. Michael?
Yeah.
I was thinking of Monticello.
Well, you guys do, let's be honest, need a new city hall, somewhere where you can have your meetings and get out of the community center. You got the land here now?
Yeah, I think, I think that, that project needs to be a combined.
Yeah, community center, um.
City offices.
Yeah, city council chambers, city offices.
We just have to take the government building in Buffalo and bring. Perfect.
That is beautiful.
One of the things too, that when that kind of goes down the line, I think Mayor did it great when they did theirs, because they put out. A big picture of what it was gonna finally look like, and they put it right by the front door, so people came in, they went, wow, I would love to walk into that versus the. Darkened hallway of the one of Mayor that they have, but.
We also have a darkened hallway.
So it'd be nice to, to just get a, a big.
So I think we'll leave it on here, and I think that'll be kind of a budgeting type thing, like figure out how much something like that might cost.
Four million.
Oh, yeah, double that.
At least double it, yeah.
Yeah.
Probably talk more like ten.
But I think, I think that's something that needs to be.
Well, you're.
Put the, put the plan at least.
Yeah.
They had a model.
Getting steps.
They had rid of it, but they had a model plan to put it out, uh, the wastewater plant.
Yeah, I mean, where would you go?
It would've been right straight in when you come in the first fence. It would've been right there on top of the hill.
And the plan of attack is kind of.
And then they would've built a hundred garage underneath, so we could've drove public works trucks underneath, underneath City Hall.
I mean, that's, we're gonna have to almost.
I mean, it was a great.
Talk to engineers, talk to planning and figure out everything and, and get timelines.
Yeah, and just kind of figure out what kind of space we're working with here and how that would look.
Right.
Well, if, then if the ponds out there would be certified, because we're piping it, is there a space out there, a larger space out there that would? Plan more like what you're talking about?
I don't think you'll ever put a city hall out there, because if we do go with Buffalo, we're talking about keeping some ponds.
For the over.
So you're not gonna want a city hall next to a sewage plant.
Yeah, keep the riffraff away.
But, um, you'll be able to add buildings out there in different areas, and that's what I'm gonna come down to later. We, I'd like to see a line item on here for a new gargantuan salt shed.
Yeah, gargantuan, huh?
Yeah, big, big one.
It's got a big price tag on it, I guess.
And we can put that out of the plan. Cause the rest of this is, uh. Kevin and then.
Just give the whole budget to Danny.
I'm just trying to play catch up on what should've been done a long time ago, I'm sorry.
I'm surprised Sean didn't get the salt shed.
We can, we, we can cross out these other two though, because we decided against burying the lines, because it's so stinking expensive. And we worked that during the first, the downtown area.
Yeah. It would be great to. If that kills me a salt shed, let's cross them off.
It'd be great to bury all of those.
And salt though.
Yeah, as long as we don't, we aren't required to, yeah.
Yep, cross them off.
Alright.
Sure power lines would be obsolete in years in the future.
So talking with the guys, it was mainly machinery, salt shed, storage shed. The machinery we're gonna go over and we'll come up with a game plan. So I think they'll be really happy with this. I mean, I'm gonna be real with you, that's why we ran it salt. We don't, didn't have enough storage for it. We can't leave it sit outside. Right? So, and once we use it, then we gotta go get it and bring it, and then use it, and then go get it and bring it, and use it. It's ridiculous.
Are we completely out now?
No.
Okay.
I had to order from a private company. And it was double, hmm, not double, but it was more than our county price. They were more than happy to bring it out here.
They were.
But I got salt right away. But, I mean, I, I think that would. Every town has a salt shed, ours is a salt need to. We need something we can drive the payloader into with a cement floor. I mean, we dig our salt out from a dirt floor, so what do you think happens? I mean, it's ridiculous. It was patchwork. But it needs to, we need to quit doing patchwork.
Everything's expensive now, but a salt shed can't be, what, what do you think, pay numbers for that? Walls, floor, roof.
I agree.
Yes, just a roof.
Off outside.
It'll probably have to be designed by Bolton Lake. I don't know what the rules are there. I, I don't know. I'm gonna say.
It's a rectangle?
Three hundred to five hundred thousand.
Maybe so, not.
Not millions.
No. I would say you could probably get a bill for three hundred. Depends on how big we want it.
How big enough to drive your.
Yeah, but how big is big enough? You talk to me, I'll tell you. I mean, it's.
Looking around the other cities, I mean, it's.
Holly's got a small one. I would build it bigger than that one. And we don't need the one the size of Buffalo's got, but I would like it that size because why not build big enough for the future instead of having to redo it again?
We can regionalize salt with Buffalo.
They can come plowers.
We just have to salt that. So we need salt, we have to send it out of Buffalo and be loaded?
No, we have salt that could bunk up.
I don't put, uh, I don't, I mean, I'd kick it out. But I would like to see it on there within the next five years.
Sounds fair.
Were there any more additional items to?
Not that I can think of. I mean Ryan wants things, but until we decide whether we do with the wastewater facility, it's kind of. On the generator at First Street's good. Um, we're gonna need probably a generator at, I would like to see all of our lift station with backup gens onsite, but it's not absolutely necessary because we have that trailer gen. So, I think the, the long First Street stays on there. I, I like it. Um, the only one that would be left to add to is the Lumberman generator up there. And I know Ryan talked about it, but. We can, right now, when the power goes out, we gotta run between First Street and Lumberman with our portable gen to keep them pumped. So you got one guy, if not two guys, going back and forth. Now, if you put in one, then we could just leave the other one there. You get what I'm saying? So it's not necessarily we gotta add the other one, but he wanted it on there. I don't think we need to add it if we get the one in a First Street. And then if any developer comes in, you guys, and they need to put in a lift station, make sure they put in onsite generators demanding of them that they have to put a generator with the lift. They're gonna buck you all the way on that too, but so the city ain't gonna pay for it, right? Just a suggestion. And then I do wanna add another thing. This is, thank God you brought this. Ryan wants to put some kinda money in there to update SCADA. I mean, the SCADA we got is old technology. And SCADA is what communicates everything here. Our walls, our towers, our lift stations. Just some kinda money in there to do some upgrades.
I actually did get gargantuan down, but SCADA, uh, probably is fucked.
S C A D A, yeah. And it doesn't need to be a ton of money, just some money in there, just so it's on the list. And acknowledge it. Whether we regionalize or not, we're, we're still gonna have wells and bell houses and things like that. We're always gonna have SCADA here. It's what dials this out.
Is that something we can kinda plan with the regionalization?
I mean, you can. If you don't regionalize, you're gonna, I mean, we'd love to upgrade this like ten years ago. It looks like seventy thousand. Well, it's not a small number.
It's the smallest number you've given us.
Yeah. That was ten years ago. So. That was one of the major things Ryan wanted.
So SCADA twenty twenty-five, you say medium?
Well, I would, you, it would have to, it would have to be one, they put the regionalization and then a question mark.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is twenty twenty-five roughly.
Other than that, I don't really have anything else disagreed to all of our wants. All our wants on equipment when me and him come up with a plan. I, I, I find it funny that the payloader's on here to be replaced this year. I, I think that's great, but. Yeah.
But that's a lot of the plan.
Yeah, it's still a lot of the plan.
Do you have a plan or a thought for, you talked about the welcome to Montrose sign?
Yeah, I don't know if that needs to go on the C I P plan, but if you wanted to, make the suggestion.
Cause they need to be upgraded when it's gonna.
Well, they need to be taken off, repainted, everything needs to be carved out, relandscapes.
Is it something, is it something that with those?
The one would go on this end, right?
Yeah.
There's just one on each end.
Right, what I'm saying, like, kinda like when you're driving through Maple Plain, they have the light sign with kinda that welcome combined.
They combine both city signs, but are you gonna do it on both ends of town?
No, 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 I'm just, I'm just saying at least on, on the one end. You know, that way.
They're so waverly people, see, till they're already out of town.
Even if we did one digital sign on that end, you'd want the rest of the sign to be the same or similar, right? So do that all at once.
You can. Doesn't need to be part of the C I P plan. I would like to see it done this summer. What I wanna do is just take them off, get them repainted, right? All the shrubs of trees that are on them need to come out. Retaining wall, nice retaining wall around it and some short plants that doesn't need to be trimmed. You know, most towns just have rock underneath their signs. You ever notice that? Like nothing, just rock?
But that's all the stuff you could do within your budget, you think?
I think so, until I get quotes from landscaping companies, I don't know what this is gonna reduce.
Would that be something too that you could potentially reach out to maybe the Boy Scouts and?
Well, we could. I mean, the landscaping work would have to be done, I think professionally.
That's exactly what I was thinking, was an Eagle project.
Or, or they could plant it whenever they plant. Just don't let them plant trees and shrubs. Anything that can all grow the sign. You get what I'm saying? I mean, that could be something also, yeah, I mean. Our Boy Scouts professional landscape layer, bricklayers, I don't know.
I mean, they did the whole, the whole project.
So they did the memorial.
Yeah.
Oh.
That was, that was, that was an Eagle Scout project, that was good.
Yeah, I think they, they must get professional help, I think, and then they do the work.
Oh.
Yeah, they put a lot of time and effort into it, but I think it'd be great if we reach out to them and just say, we got a potential project, if you got somebody looking.
Right.
And I think they have a couple that are looking to Eagle this year.
That's a possibility. What's left is to set the signs out to get professionally painted, no doubt. I don't trust Boy Scouts playing, painting the sign, but maybe they could paint too, I don't know. And all those signs were very expensive when they were, they were bought a long time ago, so. I don't think it needs to go on the C I P plan though.
Anything else for the C I P?
I don't know if it was wrong, I mean, it would be a this year thing to begin with, but another schedule of replacement thing, we decided vehicles and equipment would be the computers here in city hall. They're on a, they do more on rotation and we're putting one together with, uh, Pollman, that's our IT. Um, and they give us, you know, we have a list of all the computers we have. All of them except for maybe two of the laptops purchased for, uh, work from home during COVID. All the other ones are outside of their normal replacement schedule.
Could we reprioritize some of the money that was set aside years ago for iPads for the city council?
Potentially, hold that thought. Uh, so. So right now we have, you know, everyone's office has a desktop and there's a couple additional offices, some older desktops that don't really need to be replaced. But even those of us with desktops who also have laptops, my intent was, a couple of those laptops are still gonna be fine for another year or two.
Get rid of the desktops.
Get rid of the desktops, just go to a docking station with laptops and then just start with replacing. We're not gonna go into detail, but get rid of some of the desktops. We'd still need, uh, if we're going to remote in from anywhere from training or from home or from anywhere, we'd still need another station here running to be able to get into. Um, and I was thinking of just keeping one back in one of these old office. So, all that being said, we had put away a little more into the computer equipment fund this year for that first phase, which would be one more laptop and a couple docking stations. Instead, we bought a backup server that came up. Um, it's kind of last minute. This needs to happen sooner than later. So now that has been most of our computer equipment fund, but we did budget last year for, sorry, it slipped me, now it's either twenty or twenty-five thousand dollars towards a new laser fish scanner, because there were issues with, uh, laser fish for some time. We're thinking maybe it was more about the equipment is just getting old. Um, we solved those issues we're having with scanning through, uh, Laserfish. Their, their parent company support and everything's been working fine. So it maybe needs to be replaced in the future, but it's not an immediate need any longer. Um, so that's money that did go unspent, so now it's in capital improvement. So my thought would just be if we do go ahead with the same kinda schedule, that first phase of the schedule, which would be one laptop and some docking stations, would potentially come out of capital improvement funds because it would ultimately come from what went unspent last year, would be my take. So that's. When we start putting together something that's gonna include this year on it a little bit, that may be something coming across your desk, you know, they did a seer. It's also maybe something that would, once we start getting some figures for ARPA in the next year or two, um, even if we initially spent it out of capital improvement fund, it might be something that we could adjust to having come out of ARPA if, uh, if we start getting those estimates and we're doing better than we thought. Or if we're looking for another, you know, hand, just a handful of thousands, you know, a few grand. But that would be another long-term schedule. There's also their software updates and same one over there, but there's a lengthy location that you put together for us that will have us more on top of it and being able to budget for those, uh, needs for the next ten years.
After the kind of surprise with the backup server this year and, yeah, just look for their guidance for, you know, we need to know when these things are coming up and not the year that they need to be replaced, you know, the year before.
Needs to be replaced.
Yeah, hey, this is old. You guys should've replaced that six months ago.
Yeah, that's something that I think Pollman should have been on top of. But I think doing away with desktops and moving to the laptop is a much better way to, this is for train phase and whatnot.
And then anyone else have wish lists for? Oh, then. Yeah, so Pollman, again, when there's, we're setting up, uh, transferring to Office three sixty-five, so that we have more just a, a better useful system. Um, they're also talking about with council, we're here tonight, we're gonna set up more of your work email on your phones, but they recommend, and we've heard it before, it'd be better if we either, each council member was assigned an iPad or a Surface Pro or, or something to use the, um, the working from, so you're not intermingling your personal with that. So then if we get that request or whatnot, it'd be more just isolated to your work device or that sort of.
I think, I think that we look at pricing, um, what, what's the best option there? Cause it doesn't need to have anything other than email access pretty much.
Right.
Uh, and then we can go away with killing off seven hundred trees every time we have a council meeting. You know, that'll save us some money, that'll save us some wear and tear on the printer.
And when it comes to talking about funding for computer, I mean, I reference again the twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars we didn't spend last year or, you know.
Yeah, I think, I think we can, we can find stuff that's a couple hundred bucks, don't you think Sam? Well, I mean, we don't need, this doesn't need to have the top of line and all that.
But something that'll last long enough to go.
Yes.
To be useful for a lengthy time.
Yeah, I mean, it's electronic, so it's gonna, it's gonna obsolete itself anyways at some point, but.
Soon it comes off the line.
I'd like to see us spend less money on all this paper printing and.
I don't think we would have any issues on delivering packets. At all. Oh, you guys come up here?
Thanks for joining twenty twenty-three. We do, we do that so we could fulfill one of your requests.
Planning and zoning, Park and Rec would still need packets, but I don't know if we'd wanna go with.
They picked theirs up or just emailed?
We get them when we walk in the door. They get emailed.
But I think nine, ten times out of ten, I'm looking at what Jess emails on Friday and then grab a packet later. You know, I think that we need to come to some sort of realization in twenty twenty-three.
You would individualize per council, remember what you want, or just buy five of the same ones?
Five of the same.
I would do the same.
It would have to be the same.
Ones at least that you could like write, you know, write down. Like when you wanna make notes, you know what I mean? Be able to make notes on it or not, I don't know.
Will you use the, you were talking about Surface Pro before, right? There's, there's got comes with a stylus, doesn't it?
Yeah, a Surface Pro and what Sam's got here, I mean, you can, you can make notations on there and stuff like that. That, that way it's all saved right there too, you know? I, I just, you know, I don't see a need to keep having paper packets for us. And it'd be nice to not have.
Stacks of these.
We'll be nice to have, you know, city email on a, on a work computer, you know?
Anything else on the C I P? Uh, Gripen Consulting.
Thanks Father, I'm gonna be sitting outside training, so if I may.
You may.
You guys need me here for anything?
Yes.
Huh?
You were not allowed to leave yet.
It's my son's thirtieth birthday, we're supposed to go out to eat.
He was asked for all this money and I just.
I don't know, the only thing I could see, you guys talked about is the Pearl's Fish Shed. If you have any questions for that before I leave? No? Okay. Do you wanna explain the Steve thing or?
So, um, Steve is separating, NAC is separating, I think they're dissolving their business. Or if not, Steve is leaving them and he's just going to be an independent contractor. He is going to keep, uh, like Monticello, Buffalo, a handful of cities that he currently services. Um, he is willing to keep Montrose. He has a couple different options for fees. It could be a, um, it would be like a baseline amount and that would be approximately twelve hundred per month. Otherwise, um, he did include a fee rate schedule for hourly for any city technical assistance, one sixty-five per hour and private technical assistance is one eighty per hour. I was going to put this on the May city council agenda for, Google for him just to, or for consideration. Um, because that is going to be the end of his working with NAC, I believe is the end of May. So we'll have to decide what we wanna do, um, before then. So basically either a retainer of twelve hundred dollars a month or an hourly wage for him.
And if we wanna keep him.
And if we're gonna keep him.
So what's our average bill to him monthly?
I'll have to take a look. Um, we don't usually pay a ton to him, but it really just depends on what's going on. I mean, if there's a lot of development going on, then it's quite a bit of work and it's, and it forces our hire. So, you know, we could stay hourly and just pay for, you know, work as needed or have him on as a retainer and then we're paying twelve hundred dollars more whether we use him or not. So there's kind of a drawback.
I think it's better to just do the, the hourly unless, I mean, but is it just hourly or can we give a retainer and he'll charge his hourly rate to, out of that? You know, like you as an attorney, like the, my attorney.
I think it would be hourly, I think it would just be hourly. So he would charge us as many hours as he worked for us, yeah. Even if that was over twelve hundred dollars for some months, and then some months it might not be anything.
I would like to know the average per month if the twelve hundred's gonna save us overall, but...
I'll look that up and send that.
I would like to keep Steve around.
He's been with us for...
Quite a while, and he has a lot of history. He also has worked with like Bob Kermit, who was at the planning, and, you know, he may still have those connections, just not be working directly with them or in the same office with them.
It's not to mention he'll have less clients based on what I read in that email too.
Yeah, he'll have more time to dedicate to us if we did get, you know, really signed with development or something like that. He would be more available than he is currently, cause he's kinda getting pulled in a lot of directions. And I think he wants to kind of slim down some of his work stuff. So it's for you guys to think about and ask questions about until we go to the May meeting, and then they'll have to make a decision at that point. I'll look up the average monthly amount and...
We could just look up what we paid in the last two years.
Yeah, the last couple of years.
Yeah, cause those have been the last, well, I guess the last three years would be the last developing.
Okay, I'll get that for you and... Yeah, this was just for consideration, and I am gonna send his contract to the city attorney before we were to group that, just to make sure they're okay with that. Are we getting there? You guys have more questions about that?
Girl Scout contract discussion.
Mayor Council, this is the revised contract that the attorneys came up with based on a meeting we had a few months ago regarding this contract and where we wanted to go with it, if we were able to kind of rescind the contract that existed and do something new that would protect the city a little bit more. So that's, this is what they have come up with. There are some changes that need to be made as far as celebrate Montrose, I think is still Montrose days in here. And we need to verify that the, what the girl, what the Montrose chapter is, or if we even want to do this. This is just regarding the use of the small shed at Lyons Park. And I don't know if the Girl Scouts have any knowledge that we wanna change this, cause I don't have contact for them.
I don't know. I don't know if we want to.
Is it something that's necessary? Do we need to have it, you know? If they're willing to work with?
If they're willing to work.
Celebrate Montrose, I mean, are you willing to just leave it as it is and work with them or?
Yeah, I mean, I think Kirby was in contact with Joanne, right? And Joanne was the service unit person?
Yeah, she's, I guess, stepping away from that now. Her kids are, all her daughters are out of it now, so... But they, she, the last time I talked to her, they're still planning as soon as it's, either it's not flooded or it's not a foot of snow, they're gonna clean it all out. And they're gonna give a majority of it to other service units. I don't see a need to go through this entire thing.
That was just a conversation I wanted to have since we had them look at it, and this is what they came up with, so...
So, just a general knowledge question. This original agreement that we can't find an original copy of, if there was a disbanding or we tore it down, it's null and void then, right? It doesn't say anything about if they are no longer a unit. But if they're no longer a unit, this is null and void, and if we tear it down, it's null and void, I would assume, right?
Should the city deem it necessary to tear down the building or sell property? City agrees to use its best efforts to find another similar space on city property to allow Girl Scouts to use for storage.
Best efforts.
Not guaranteed, though.
Yeah, not guaranteed in the space. I think it's, it's...
I mean, that shed's ten by eight?
Yeah, I mean, it's a very small shed.
Right? Or is it smaller than that?
It's very small.
Three people, tight.
Yeah, see, it looks pretty small in here. I mean, it's small, and then the Boy Scout shed, that's all that there is.
Yeah.
It's just like a Menards shed that they sell.
I mean, what if we just tore it down and built something twice that size? Public Works would be happy to use it. They can use it during the celebration days.
Yeah, they can use a portion of it for storage, I guess, if they really need to. Yeah, I mean, if you guys don't think we need to revise this contract.
Oh, I think so.
It's such a good idea.
Ninety-nine.
Get a little of the broadness of it.
I've heard it like six times. I'm like this.
I think it needs to be though more set in to where the city has more control of the concessions, cause it is a city building. So this, the original agreement is giving pretty much Girl Scouts all the control.
If they want to participate in Montrose, they can celebrate.
Right, and even with the new agreement, it gives them high first priority anyway. So, as they should, they should have the first priority if they have a troop or whatever. But I think with the agreement that our attorneys did up, it gives the city more, more, I guess, just control of what goes on with that building.
I'm still a little confused. Is there a troop?
We don't know.
I, like, I don't think that has a straight answer.
That kinda knows this.
The last two years.
Well, there is a troop.
There is.
Because they did have a girl selling cookies at the Fish Fry's.
And it was, it was Montrose troop or was it another one?
They had a girl at Dollar General too at one point.
Was it Montrose? Cause I know there was a lady.
The lady, they live over on Seventh Street.
There is a troop in town right now.
And they're active? I mean, do they want access to this building? I mean...
So when I talked to them at the Fish Fry, the troop that they're active with right now until the end of May, once school gets out, is Leah's troop. Leah's gonna leave, they're gonna take over the troop. So we did talk about this. I know Brian talked to them quite a bit too about coming and joining us, but they are not anywhere, they don't know anything about this. They, they're all little, you know? They've never done anything, so... I don't know.
But if they weren't around, does it erode this? Or could you, in theory, they disbanded, ten years from now, they restart the Montrose Girl Scouts, would this be in effect then again, or would this be null and void if they're not continuously running?
The current contract, right?
Yeah, just cause it's so vague. But I don't know if we wanna put whatever the attorney's gonna charge us to put this together. That's why it's...
Well, they already kinda put it together. We already paid the attorney to do that.
Yeah, the, I mean, there's still some refining and things that need to be done, but, yeah, I mean, they, they already, I'm sure we paid for this already, so... Do the Girl Scouts have to agree to this?
I don't know.
It looks like it comes there one on a party name that is agreement.
Yeah. But, I mean, it's still giving them first access, you know? And I don't think anybody wanted to take that away. It's just being able to use that building.
Do you know what the chapter is called?
Girl Scouts of Minnesota, Wisconsin.
No, I mean, like the, like they were saying, like Montrose chapter of the Girl Scouts of Minnesota, Wisconsin Valleys.
I think it's Montrose, Maple Lake and...
Montrose, Buffalo, Maple Lake, Buffalo, Maple Lake, Montrose.
Yeah.
Yeah, B M L. B M L.
B L M?
No, Buffalo.
B M L.
B M L. Buffalo, Maple Lake, Montrose.
B M L N.
Of Minnesota, Wisconsin, Northern Valleys.
Buffalo, Montrose. B M L?
B M L N.
What?
It's Buffalo, Maple Lake, Montrose.
Oh, okay, okay. I was like, you guys, that's not what you're saying, and then you said it again, so I was like, okay. I realized the L was down there.
I mean, I don't think it hurts anything to pass this.
I mean, if it's... Or if the Girl Scouts are willing to terminate this, that would be another option. Then we would just have full and...
It's a little option B, let's see if they're willing to terminate.
Yeah, ask them if they wanna terminate it, and if not, then they'll be able to go with this.
Cause they would just have to sign off saying that they're willing to terminate this old agreement, and if they are...
Is this the same type of agreement that we have with the Boy Scout shed?
It's the same thing. I don't, I don't know if I have a...
We didn't have a copy of this one. We don't have a copy of that.
Yeah, it might be one I asked her about it. I'm sure he's got one. He does. Okay. So are we gonna reach out to Joanne or?
I think it's, I think Leah's the one in charge right now. I think she's the one in charge. I don't think Joanne's involved.
Who is it? Leah Ward? And she's only gonna be in charge now till school gets out, so... All right, who's gonna reach out?
I will.
Oh.
Or Michael. Yeah, like, I think he has the contact, you know, cause he said something about Leah. She'll be for a community center, so he might have a contact number. Or if you guys wanna reach out, that's fine too.
Nope, we'll let you. Unless you want to.
No, we don't need to have any people.
Right.
That's fine. If Michael reaches out, there's one person in charge of reaching out.
You gotta be there, I mean, just keep it simple.
Okay. All right, word turn.